Is the approval of this, the March one, two thousand forty-one council meeting, which is in the nearby, the county limits there, or the county? Is there motion to approve this as today? As my cats from here, say it out. Say my cats from duty, in the special way, and this is a place is not correct. And I have a question, I will say with approval of this. All right. I got you, Captain Lawrence.
Yeah, I'm in the front. I did it, yeah, okay.
I got you, and I'm in the front.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of the resolution adopted of your comprehensive amendment for Monroe County and the city of the South. Good call.
The announcement that the regional commission is going to review the resolution, the city council.
All right. Ms. Nelson, if you feel like the film was close to be banned, but this might be called the government. Maybe you have to tell your.
Oh, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Dan.
I gave us the resolution here to amend the twenty seventeen. It's down in the top against the plan of Monroe County, the city of Forside, and we are closed. And it continues to have specific information in the community work plans that would enable us to apply the areas of layout. First, we replace metal water lines throughout the neighborhood within the city. The second is to provide water for Sunset Acres and Brooklyn Drive. And the third is to improve water systems and their historicity of this city. And this is for FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, primarily because these are the last few years in the off-planting season, and also having been here, also enable us to, as a crater, standing squarely forward to be looking at the off-planting process upcoming.
Okay. If I do name it, you may have an approval from the council.
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there motion to approve, or the vote is? Those are my cats from duty, that's my cats from here. The council has a question. And I have a call question, all in favor. Those who care, if you have a question, so approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing of community development block grant. The call.
Creation, creation is.
Do they need some other people separate?
I just had to stop.
Do you have any more? I was like, sure, I'll get to four minutes. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing to discuss the twenty twenty-one community development block and CDBG application. The CDBG program provides funding for communities applying to address critical housing and reconstruction problems in this city. On activities including water, sewer systems, streets, and drainage, I see these in public buildings, such as senior center of laws and drug court, projects most primarily associated with a population of low to moderate income. The city of Forside was considered as a line of funding to replace water lines in Sunset Acres and Brooklyn Drive. With the government surveying, as the local director of regional commissions, the mayor has been determined the beneficiaries that the grant requires, that seventy percent of beneficiaries must be considered low to moderate income. City of Forside awarded up to one seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of CDBG funding for this project, while the city will be contributing up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the month. Donated services would be coupled with local net to increase the community level, and that's the project timeline of two years. The city of Forside will comply on all project federal and state regulations throughout the project's time zone. This includes the permanent coverage of air models, which I have some air housing brochures at the site available. With mention that this is a brochure, and it is illegal to discriminate against any person because of their race, color, religion, sex, gender, familial status, and national origin, housing practices, in accordance with the requirements of the Federal House Administration Act of nineteen eighty-eight. No residence will be displace by those project activities, and that no acquisition of private property can be required from this project. Contracts cannot continue with radio mail, and this grant that was eligible for first for preference through section three of Housing Burden Development Act of nineteen sixty-eight, is in contract with each other under the prevailing jurisdiction waived in years. Now I must give you the issue of potential contest to mentor. Councilman Mike Dodd resides in the project area of three fifty-four acres of Sunset Acres. Additionally, two city councils, Councilman resides on Brooklyn Drive, Councilman John Howard is a three eighty-three Brooklyn drive, and Councilman John Lawrence is a three forty-five Brooklyn drive. Do you notice that now that these conflicts of interest, and these councils will stay from all those things of twenty twenty-one to the application? Any questions or comments from the public?
That'll make the damn most of us for example, when we title that location back. Any questions for Ms. Nelson? And we need to have a public period of support, is that correct?
Yeah. If you have a sign that you, if you see a little, we quatter, that we. Go ahead.
Okay. Or anybody speaks, or does anybody in the room?
Um, anybody with questions?
Okay. Uh, we will now open the floor for the public period by issue of community development block grants, which we've proposed, which we heard, and have more of the places where I have some Sunset Acres and Brooklyn Drive neighborhood. Now, if there's a public influence, anyone in this audience, wanting to, given that they do so at this time, either over or against, or just give your opinion on that. Or else. We love the public period. Anyone, all interested in speaking. The right to reflect, and there is no interest. Public influence, here in the public period, and this point, we will consider this as being called, not being that called from this time. Do you need us any votes?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, thanks once, because the public force to thank you too, that's.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, that's the next item on the agenda, so we're going to award this for the top of course, and approve.
I don't know, I think that's even right, you're closing, but in your packet, you have a letter of recommendation from the Minnesota Regional Commission, uh, we didn't have twenty-four orders for the proposal, we had three bits submitted a bid. You'll see those three bids there, uh, Raven Dog, uh, has a national certificate of five thousand nine hundred. Business Construction has a system of hundred seven thousand one hundred twenty. Per Planer of Georgia has Fairland, it's sixty-two thousand five hundred. And you'll see their scores, and even though, um, Per Planer out of Fairland was lower than their overall construction, or anything, uh, was significantly higher, and you'll see their scoring, and at least Brunson, with the God Force and the Regional Commission scored those, and we recommend that we award this to Raven Dog, uh, National Agency, for this price of a hundred and five thousand nine hundred dollars.
All right. And those people's names are used to manage more.
Yes, I'm sorry, this is the Land of Water Conservation Grant, which gives you grants up to fifty thousand dollars, so we would, we would pay the additional, um, fifty-five thousand nine hundred, and then we would be reimbursed from the top course, and you guys donate to give them till at least the end of the, um, grant term to read and watch the deed for that, and that will be December twenty twenty-two, for them to reimburse.
All right. Are there motion to approve the recommendation from the city there? There was. Those are the councilmen, I said, my cats from here, that's very close. And we'll talk. Okay. Motion to the state is, Councilor Frank. Beth, oh, can you update us on the scope of the work? Uh, what's being done? I totally forgot.
They are replacing, uh, sod on several of the tees and sand in the bumpers. I don't remember the exact square footage, do you remember them exactly? I want to say it was like, close to fifty thousand square foot of sod. Um, lose, about forty-four thousand square feet of sod on the tee. And the priority is if the tees finished, and the remainder of the tees for sand in the bumpers. Does that help, Mr. Shroud?
It does, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Here is another call question, all in favor. All right, Councilman Howard, I can't see you, you can't hear me. But the record reflects, is motion carried unanimously, and so approved, and also the record reflects that Councilman Shroud and friends, uh, brought that discussion out of it. All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of two months of the chat, uh, senior commerce or the recipient.
Well, that's a, and it's, that's a, it's your here, and I definitely come around to the public, so that those that are specific to the, 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 the world, uh, you have a copy of the application that the chairman of commerce submitted back in the eighth year, and so the chairman of commerce is going to review the caution that they will take during the, um, city festival, and ask for consideration of the streetlights.
All right. And I look to the vice chairman, the chairman of president, and the president of the chairman of the board.
Well, we come before y'all again, and originally, it's a topic that came back in April, but with the, um, decrease in pace of the thought, we'll be going to talk to y'all about this now. We have set a scheduled date for the festival, May twenty-second and twenty-third, that's the weekend before Memorial Day, and we try to push that out as hard as possible, after that's already been planned. Um, so, our precautions are the same as we came to you before, which is we would, um, we'll get out of the, we are going to ask the vendors to wear masks, we are going to ask them to provide size on their pants, that is what we added, um, we got that in the festival. We are going to have handstand cycle session, only outdoor events, and back there are only little bits, we're going to be good foot friendly for plans there every twenty-fourth and the actual auction ground, which will make twenty-second, twenty-third. We do not plan to have stage or a pitch bar, um, where there are scattered people. Am I missing anything?
Um, we're going to give, uh, a solution, the bleach and water solution, um, to each vendor, we have to provide, so that they can wipe out their towels and things, food vendors, in between each customer as well, or every third.
We're open to any other suggestions.
All right. Any questions from the council, for the representatives of the town? All right. Thank you, ladies, for being here. Are there any motions in fourth county from the council?
I know that we approved the three closures, from the, uh, asking.
Our motion from the council from Dodd, to approve the three closures, uh, for the twenty-second, twenty-third for the festival, seconded by Councilman D. Is there any discussion or questions from the council? Mr. Howard? I can't count, sorry, because I'm showing up on my screen. Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
I just want to make it, um, known and understood, I mean, you know, there's so many comments in record too, that our city council is trying to take away, uh, you know, freedom and whatnot, it was never about taking anybody's freedoms, it was about the safety of our city employees, at least for me, I know of, uh, as I said before, I couldn't, um, ask the employees to do something that I would do. I mean, we pay them, uh, you know, we pay them, I just keep my money out, but I don't think any of, any of my money is ever enough to ask them to go do what I know that, you know, it's something I would do, so, no, I'm not, I probably still won't come, just depending on, you know, climate, what's going on, uh, at that time, I mean, I'm grateful that we have a shot, and everything, but then there are people that still don't want to get the shot, which is their right, their right to do it. I'm one of the ones that, that, uh, will get the shot, I'm down to hurt those in a way, no matter. So, it's still, it's still, uh, it's still a note for me, uh, and I don't understand it, just to that, I mean, but, maybe I'm crazy, I know, we have the plan, I did, I know, we got busy, we had, I mean, but maybe I'm crazy, does sound better, I'm, I'm really glad y'all would come in and say, let's do it next week, um, you know, because the power will be going and whatnot, but maybe I'm crazy, does sound better, and I mean, and it makes it deeper, I, I just don't know how I would do it. So, what, what I would say is, I mean, and then you have to, the other thing, how it turns out was, and I thought, um, then to the point, I mean, what happened was, and I told her, you know, the, the burden falls on you, if we were to get some of our people fit, well, I'm gonna say, it doesn't fall on any of us, so, and that's why, you know, I just told her, I said, there is a certain that you have, you know, let us know, but I, but I, I was just, I remember doing, just talking with, uh, a couple of departments every day, and, uh, you know, some of them, I said, they don't mind, some of them said that they don't want to do it, so, I, you know, I guess it's going to be making a voluntary thing for the employees, and we're not telling any employees to go and do it, uh, but I mean, quite frankly, that next, when I had said, um, I would go for it, if we could leave our employees out of the equation altogether, because I, I just don't, I just don't want to have our city management position where you've got a crown or a field position, just like I said, I mean, I, that, that got nothing to do with anybody's free, or anything, that's about thinking about your, uh, human resource, and, you know, that's, that's just what it is, I, I know some of you feel like, you know, it's more about the, the, the dollar value, when you're concerned about the employees, I mean, not employees, the business owners moving money, I, I know that's important, but, but at the same time, I know that I'm not, I'm not just making a rest, I know that I'm not going to try and say, uh, cell phone call, and I'm not going to say it was a trash, or, but quite a lot I'm not going to do either, and, and not let anybody run, of course, you're going to do the same thing. That's what I was looking at, I mean, I just want to make that clear, you know, it was never about, you know, people can do what they want to do, and that's perfectly fine. I was just looking at the fact of, and I'm still looking at the fact that the safety of our city employees, because even when you close the street, you still want our employees to be involved and to help, um, you know, that's just important, that's what I want to make that clear, that, that's all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Howard, any other discussion or comment? All right, Councilman Shroud? Councilman Shroud?
All right, so, um, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Hey, number one, good evening, how did I respond? Um, the, I, I started saying this with the, uh, Councilman Howard, uh, as a matter of fact, you know, we can be talking about this, like, uh, I don't concern public employees, I totally agree with Councilman, I, Councilman Howard, a sentiment of, you know, people can come and go as they please, but if, if an employee has been ordered to be at work on that day, um, that really concerns me. Uh, now, what I would like to think is that if they do have to work, to maybe looking at hearing those employees, some sort of have their duty there. I love the day, not going out to you, um, in education system, this line was first through the last week of school, uh, I would love, absolutely love the day, thank y'all for your, uh, for, for that day, uh, but my, my biggest concern, I'm only old as right now, if you can work something with the employees, and that, and that's, that's a big whole thing, other than that, I like the day, other than that, that's the session.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Shroud, any other comments or discussion? Here is none, I will call the question, all in favor?
Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we need a way to count the alarm for the third, he just disappeared on?
I, I don't know, he did disappear, uh, early in this discussion, on this call, so, I'm not sure what happened.
I know that.
We can try, we can try with a hook, we can try to raise it. Uh, the call, you want to, I can try to call it, maybe this second, we'll try to call it.
I don't know, I don't know. They're going to check on it.
You see it, yeah.
So.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I, I have a question, you know, if, you know, we can all get that our thoughts to be, one of your thoughts is, for you, that, that means a lot to me, yeah, or is that more, or is that more gathered, or that we can play on this for you?
Are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. We, we getting ready to vote, all right? We getting ready to vote. You ready? All right, I want, we're getting ready to vote. I'm going to turn the phone off, if you're voting on the team here, we got to keep the phone off.
No, 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 yeah, I can, yeah, I'm fine, yeah, I got the phone, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to keep you on the phone, until we get the, all right. All right. All right, there you have it, you're on the speakerphone, all right. All right. All right, there being no further discussion.
Do you have any answer, Mr. Shroud's question?
Yes, sir. Please, be honest.
Uh, when, uh, Captain Howard and I spoke today, I called Steve Jones, and asked him about his employees, and I asked him to talk to his employees about working, um, and not to consider that they were working in the overtime, to ask them if they felt safe enough, if they had any issues, um, about the virus, he talked to eight of the guys, uh, three of the guys said no, that they did not want to work, five of the guys said yes, they were willing to work, so long as they were allowed to wear their PPEs, and I said, allow, yes, probably required, to wear their PPEs. Uh, so we do have, uh, we do not require that employees work, uh, we do let them side up, uh, who wants to work, it's not, it's really not a requirement, and especially this year, we would not foresee one that says, I do not want to work. Um, what we will need to do is, if it is approved, we may need to get together earlier than what we normally do, uh, to make sure that we have enough employees from city employees, uh, because that's, that's what we use as our sponsorship, because we do not pay for anything for the sponsorship, we use our, our in time, uh, and so we need to, to make sure, prior to that, that we have enough employees that are willing to work, we may have to do a little something different with our police booth and our department booth, and I hope that I didn't blow up of everybody, um, but we, we certainly will only do that as a volunteer basis, we will not require any employee to work the festival.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Howard. All right. There being no further discussion?
Jesus, I'm so mad at you.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman Shroud.
Jesus, you did it first.
So, so is it possible, that we, I mean, I, and I sit here, and ladies, I apologize, I, I can hear you, but not make clear respect, they're just, uh, providing redundant, is it possible that we have either A, hand occupation, or B, hand sign of God who's making stuff around, uh, facilities, so we can?
Yes, that will be done, yes, sir, that's in the plan.
How about making it mandatory to wear masks in five years?
All right, we're at, well, what, we're outside, what we are going to do will require our vendors to wear, um, masks, and only allow two shoppers in a booth at a time.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? What question? If I have to hand it up, I can't see it. All right. And then, I know a call question again, all in favor, and motion on paper, and Mr. Dodd. All right. Councilman Lawrence, how do you feel?
Yeah, I'm ready, yeah, okay, yeah.
All right. Are there any opposed to the motion? All right. But the record reflects that the motion passes with four votes, and the affirmative are two votes against. All right. Thank you, and thank you, ladies, for coming, yes. Come on, get on.
Get on, yeah, all right.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the six months of the chance for people, party people, for buying food now.
We previously approved this, uh, this was actually submitted by Officer Shroud, um, and so I'm, I don't know if he has anything that he wants to interject or not, uh, what they want to do is close the block of the street behind Ocean's Bank, close Jackson Street, um, King Street to Moore Street, uh, and they will be giving out, um, food, uh, let's say it's going to be on Saturday, March the twentieth, from nine AM to one PM. Uh, the last time they did this, I believe, Mr. Shroud, said that they had a couple of hundred people that showed up to get food, and they are anticipating more than that this time, uh, but that would be the street closing, nine AM to one PM, that's that one block.
All right. Well, now, motion to approve, this is the other group. Motion by Councilman Dulce, seconded by Councilman Buick. Any discussion or questions related to this street closing report?
Uh, how can I mention this to you, babe?
Councilman Shroud?
Hey, the, the, the donation, uh, is an organization that we work, uh, that I work with, um, and they, I recall from recollection, uh, when they get food last time, we were able, able to feed about three, four hundred people, um, and this time, we were able to feed about twelve hundred people, um, so, it's already taken care of, the biggest condition, the main, if you want to hand out lots of food, we will turn to work, I'll let you have to wear a mask, and, um, have a, have a children's theater, thank you, you did this.
What, what is the number again, Councilman Shroud?
It is, it is, it is Saturday, for ten, the two. I mean, it's just ten, twelve, ten, twelve, yeah.
But they're closing the street from Route one.
All right.
And we don't stand a setup in front of.
All right. We have motion, and second, any other discussion or questions? Here is none, I have a call question, all in favor?
I would choose a double, I would love a good application.
All right. Let the record reflect all the, the council, whether it's affirmative, uh, any negative, uh, the negative, and one, that's intended for Councilman Shroud. All right, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the change order request number six of Park College Construction, that they won't give us the money back.
Yeah, that's, sorry. If they were. The original completion date, this is a review, uh, was March the twenty-third of twenty twenty-one, they already asked for three additional days, which took them to the twenty-sixth, and then ten additional days, which took them to April the fifth, those thirteen days were all rain days, the bi-hybrid installation included three days, and that took them to April the eighth, this request is for an additional five days, uh, the only issue that I have on this change order, it says for five days, which will take them to April the fifteenth, uh, they were at April the eighth, and that's not April the fifteenth, uh, so.
They're going to tell the work, like, maybe it's why, they don't go to them.
Uh, but anyway, the, um, this will be whether you approve for the, the five days until April the fifteenth, when we come back in the first council meeting in April, we will, uh, review that complacency schedule that they have submitted, um, even when you say it, until September or the fifteenth, uh, we do have a letter from them that reviews the, the additional days that they are asking for, they made an awful lot of play away on the building, last week was, um, a good week for them, that's good because of the problem that you're not going to get an awful lot of, of today, uh, but I do ask that you approve change order number six, uh, to take them to April the fifteenth.
All right. Is there motion to approve this change order from the council?
Some, no.
Motion for Councilman Buick, seconded by Councilman Dodd, any discussion or questions related to this change order? Here is none, I call the question, all in favor? Councilman Lawrence?
Yes, okay, yeah.
All right. All right, everybody here, is that? All right, I will let you say it. All right. Motion period, you have a question, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the purchase of a leased vehicle, the public finance strategy, is all.
Uh, you have in your packet copy of the agreement, and remember, a couple of years ago, we had a couple of vehicles that we were actually leasing through, uh, the public finance strategies, and the payment for those vehicles was being made through these citations, twenty-five dollar per citation, that's when that vehicle, um, was sent to public finance, uh, public finance was getting out of the leasing business, uh, the vehicle, the last vehicle that we have with them is the two thousand seventeen Explorer, and then it was to sell that vehicle for fourteen thousand dollars, she cares, we're going to, to the court, we're purchasing that vehicle, since we've made a profile, we know that it doesn't have any issues. She cares, we're going to, to the court, we're purchasing that vehicle, since we've had a profile, we know that it doesn't have any issues, and so we're going for, before you to purchase the 2017 Explorer for fourteen thousand dollars.
Alright, there are motions to approve this, quick.
Some move.
Motion by Council Buick, and there are second, second by Council Dodd, any discussion or questions related to the motion? I see, does somebody have that? Alright, yeah. Uh, go ahead.
Oh, that's, that's part of it, so this is not budgeted, thank you, I, I could, I left that part completely out, this is not budgeted, but what we would like to do at the end of the year, if, if we end up that, uh, this budget is, um, is over, which wasn't likely, well, being a fourteen thousand dollar pocketing budget, we would like to use some of the money that we were reimbursed for the subsequent insurance month for that all workers comp pays, that five hundred thousand dollars that we received last year goes into, and will go towards your fund balance, uh, but you don't use that until after the end of the year, when you say, this, this budget is, is out, and so then we'll, we'll have to bring it back to you, you do the fund balance to pay that. But, we're legally, we have the money to just pay for it, didn't we?
Alright, any other discussion or questions? Here now, I call a question, all in favor? Motion period, you have a question to approve. Next time on the agenda is approval of the waiver of irrigation tap fee request on Monroe County Board of Commissioners, Ms. Hall.
Yes, you have, um, a letter from Jim Mendez in your packet, asking that the two thousand dollar tap fee be waived. Uh, when they originally made this request to me, they had just asked for irrigation line, uh, but you'll see that this is for memorial for, uh, Michael Lawrence, and then so I did present to you to, um, and ask you to please waive that tap fee, uh, since this will be for memorial for the, the irrigation at that memorial.
This is after district's. Alright, I have a motion, Council Dulce, signed by Council Buick, to approve the waiver of this irrigation tap fee. Any discussion or questions? Here now, I call a question, all in favor? Motion period, you have a question to approve. Now, I remember now, the Commissioner Davis is with us tonight, now, once you, any business, or just wanted to ask, anyone, we're certain of why you're here, if you do want to say you're doing it right now, just do that. As you mentioned, thank you for the evening. Alright, the next time on the agenda is the 2020 review by Department, yes? And I'll let the call keep that up for, for the.
Just so y'all understand why, um, why I decided to do this, I wanted to review very quickly. Um, Governor Kemp announced the first executive order related to the COVID-19 on March 14th, 2020. Uh, this is the first of many executive orders to be submitted related to COVID-19. This was the first executive order, or maybe that would be, uh, submitted on COVID-19, with the first shelter in place to be announced on March the 23rd of 2020. While we have been near the line first over the last year, I thought it would be a good opportunity for the Department head to highlight their departments, and showcase their employees, what they, they were able to accomplish during the 2020, in spite of the hardships related to COVID-20, COVID-19. You heard from the economic development tourism at the last meeting, uh, to review all of the new, uh, businesses that we have, uh, and those, that, those projects that are in the works. I hope you listened carefully tonight to the presentations, and congratulate each one of them on the accomplishments that they have been able to achieve. Uh, these are only the highs that I want to present to you tonight. Uh, I did tell them that they would have about five minutes, some of them asked for a minute, and some of them asked for thirty. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure exactly, uh, what the, what the time limit's gonna be on each one of them, uh, but I do ask that, that you listen to them, we'll have to stop in the 20th one of them, because some of them do have some presentations that they want to make, um, and some of them are not accustomed to making public presentations, uh, so, you know, with, and especially with the internet issue that we're having tonight, we may have to stop them at the start a, a couple of times. Uh, we're gonna go in order, as to the order of our departments, and let y'all know that Trump and Paul have decided to do something different, so we'll start with Virginia. Virginia's over the administration, which includes, um, everyone at City Hall, the Court, and, uh, inventory and purchasing. So, we will. Make sure that, if you want to use that, make sure that on the upper left-hand side of the, of this one.
Okay, so, the 2020, this hall, after about a year and a half, maybe two years, working for the regional commission, uh, with council approval, and within the pay plan, all, uh, City Hall employees, which was done in January of 2020, which all employees were insured right before. And then during the pandemic, when all that started, the audit being done in, in April, and all that work was done remotely, or through emails, or phone calls, which was a much more difficult process, which this hall had already spoken about before, and, uh, we had significant efficiencies identified, and overall, it was good to clean on it for a five-year. And then, of course, the, uh, schedules had to be adjusted because of health concerns and everything, keeping staff healthy. We, uh, we went from working ten-hour shifts, I think, for a few weeks, uh, for, uh, four days a week, to working two days a week at home, and then three days a week in the office, and the adjust, the staff had to be adjusted, you know, quite a bit there in the beginning to, uh, to make the City Hall staff processes adjust and more efficiently. So, all invoices to vendors were approved, processed and paid on time, we got third new business license issued, which Jamie had talked about, and all the COVID supplies that were, you know, hard to find for a while, were, uh, ordered at Captain's stock, keep all staff, uh, staff, staff healthy and whatever, uh, which was a beating itself. And then all monthly payments were completed without interruptions. Council had voted to, uh, not do disconnects for six months, and customers' accounts remained in good standing throughout that time, even while there were no disconnects, or does, frankly, allow. And then, of course, all the employees taking care of, without interruptions or paydays, who produce office staff and benefits, were managed and continued per usual protocol. And then I completed the, uh, I think it was in the fourth class, uh, last year, even with everything I was dealing with personally, and throughout the COVID situation.
And one thing on, uh, all the employees, that Virginia has only one employee this time related to COVID, and that was this year, and it was not last year. Uh, so the, the measure she put in, in place, um, worked.
Good evening, we'll start with the fact that, as everybody knows, that when COVID hit, it, it, it truly was things kind of going on in quadrants. Um, we just all were, uh, put together policies and grew to that, uh, policies at the fire department. But I'm gonna start out. We'll start out with Splashpad, uh, probably the most unique thing that happened at Splashpad, uh, this year, was we had a family of self-move-in, uh, they were short-lived. Uh, the, uh, Splashpad was late opening, but we were able to, uh, get open and get in operation. During the year, I also became certified pool operator, so I extended the testing myself. Uh, Nancy developed the SOPs for Splashpad in operation, and we have, uh, some very large notebooks, hopefully, that anybody brought up in Houston. Last year, Splashpad pretty much ran for, uh, roughly about ninety-nine percent of the season. Um, we had some issues, but nothing major, uh, that we couldn't deal with it. But as part of COVID, as, in addition to COVID, uh, our, our extra precautions, we made sure that everything was sanitized and cleaned normally every day, uh, the Splashpads cleansed every day, and, and extra precautions was taken during this time, and will continue as a part, uh, this year. We also, uh, we also added a cover for, um, pumping equipment. Soil erosion, uh, we had twelve sites this year, or last year, for, uh, construction COVID, that seemed to slow down, uh, construction any at all. It's one of the things that I do, is perform the soil erosion inspections, and during COVID, we maintained our inspections on a regular basis. We had four projects complete, and then we currently have twelve projects for this year, uh, so far. From the fire department, um, when COVID hit, I have to say that, uh, the fire department stepped up, um, right out of the gate. We were, um, faced with dealing with, with COVID patients, symptomatic patients. The guys there stepped up without any hesitation, we did put in, we did implement, uh, ground lines for response, cleaning vehicles, deconking personnel, and that was done on a regular basis, we probably decon four, five, to six times a day, just depends on, depending on the day. Uh, that included, um, the group coming in, taking a shower, taking their clothes, some uniforms had to be washed completely, so they'd bring extra uniform, uh, and. From the fire department standpoint, um, there were open planks, and then it was so severe, uh, these guys jumped in there and did exactly what they needed to do, uh, even though it's unknown, and without hesitation, and they actually committed to that. And, and also, we decontaminated, and, uh, as somebody else said, they sanitized the, uh, the vehicles after they were running. A lot of these fire calls are still in place, and, um, they will continue until this is completely done. We ran sixteen hundred and nine calls, uh, emergency calls last year, uh, seventy-five percent of them were medical or recs. Now, our recs during the frontline of the COVID, uh, pandemic, uh, the recs actually decreased, uh, but we did see an increase in just regular medical calls, dealing with, uh, uh, COVID patients and symptomatic, uh, patients as well. We were able to get four thousand fifty-one combined, um, training hours, uh, department buyout. And all personnel received a minimum of two hundred thirty-six, uh, hours per year. All personnel met state certification requirements, and the number does not reflect the, uh, medical recertification that they had to go through. During the year, we did have four CPR settings, um, had one so far this year, and three of, three of those were confirmed COVID patients, and they did survive. Fire inspections and fire safety inspections were suspended here at the, due to COVID. We did complete a queue, uh, probably forty percent of the inspections before, uh, COVID hit, but once it hit, we did, we shut that down, um, part of the treatment. We did put on a new pumper, and this pump will replace the, uh, upcoming ten-year-old apparatus. This is fifteen-hundred-gallon pump, seven-hundred-fifty gallons of water, uh, it is currently in service now. The truck we did replace moved to our second out, or it was reserved in the maintenance. As a part of that equipment package, uh, we were able to purchase, uh, a new set of education equipment. It replaced a twenty-six-year-old set, and if you notice, I don't know if you can tell, but this is actually a battery operator, and believe it or not, it's actually stronger, faster than our older, uh, units. The cutter, um, has three hundred twelve thousand foot pounds cutting pressure, spreader sixty-three thousand, and the ram is forty-eight thousand, so it's very adequate, um, to do the job. In 2021, um, we hope to get our project programs, uh, back on track, uh, Nancy has been doing some things online, and, um, we've not really had a community in-person visits, I think we had one for the school, but it was very regulated, and, and there was a lot of distance, and, um, there was no up close, Spark didn't get to attend. But this year, depending on how the schools, uh, operate, or in the upcoming year, uh, will follow in the way that we're going, as the place set, uh, forth as well. We plan on going ahead and starting the inspection program, uh, back, um, our firefighters, when they go in to do the inspections, will be masked up, and, uh, they will make sure that all, uh, put a call for that. We're gonna continue to train each, uh, each firefighter's career path, we're gonna maintain our own state certification and ISO requirements as well. And I personally will become certified examiner for soil erosion, and that will allow us not to have to send our plan law, uh, tomorrow to get approved. This year, we did apply for the safety grant for two additional firefighters, which would give us five for shift. And I certainly appreciate y'all's support.
We thank you, chief, one, one place. I'm there, I have to wait, you know, man.
Right now, it's two.
Real life, I agree with it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Alright.
First of all, I just want to thank American, Ms. Hall, and getting us, uh, to be up here, to speak about our conference in 2020. Before I get started, I want to introduce my new officer, she's available, she worked with us back in 2019, but she, uh, she left inside, she wanna come back to the big city of Orlando, so we just gonna work, she needs to.
Welcome, Mike. Can we change the room?
Oh, I don't have our, my, my tape, so, this one, we don't have it. Uh, that being said, we related to, uh, somewhat looking for the staff, uh, in 2020, uh, for a long time, we've been short, uh, but now we, we're trying for the staff, thank you for that. The police department was, uh, able to purchase five new vehicles in 2020, four towels, and a gorge, which is full, that we, just, uh, we, we would like to count for, and to matter that. Uh, the police department implemented a new skill of training, uh, saying that the new hires can current the police. And what that, uh, was about was, every time I would send someone to Monday, they would pass PT, at Monday. So what we did was, we didn't want this one, and we related to hire our first candidate on that point, we related to pass PT, so he'll get to go to Monday sometime in July, we were glad for that. In 2021, the police department installed a new camera system, you can monitor the front lobby, you can also monitor the evidence room and the indoor lot. We upgraded the alarm system for the evidence room, if the alarm system ever go off, it would be, it would notify and all the kind of shadow department, that the alarm would go off. The call box outside police department was also upgraded. It is now renewable and it's used frequently. The old one we had, nobody really knew about it. All you have to do now is door, click the real button, all kinds of chat department, you go. It's a whole lot easier than you'd imagine. We upgraded our body cameras. We had five new, but now we went to then lock, which is a better camera. It's a whole lot better. You can recognize the picture a whole lot better than the old camera. So we modernized the speed testing signs. We made a significant impact on young, strict, sharp, strict, and these men. Got complaining about off-speed, but we related to get that system and it's rid of that stuff a whole lot. So we appreciate that. The additional staff, we related to after having some work full-time COVID enforcement. We all talk about the progress that we need to get rid of. So Officer Malone has put all of the attention on COVID enforcement. He's doing a great job, so I just want to commend him on that also. The criminal investigation issue was that I related to a person's laptop for them to download videos and be able to take that laptop. I just feel with them to be able to get that work completed in a time and amount. So they really love the laptop. They draw them, so we can do one thing for that. Chief, we have that stuff on all four, yes, already. All the toll booth have that laptop. So see how they also hang new storage bins for evidence? We can store more room under that being confiscated, more storage and money that have been confiscated in your evidence room. See how they also purchased a turnhard drive? This drive would help with download or larger evidence and crime data that we, that we, I don't feel. We had a little small, but we were able to get a larger one. So we were able to store more data on that particular hard drive. Our administrative assistant, Amy Hudson, received a CAC which currently eight to four negative certification on the George Bureau of Investigation. And what that is, she'll be able to run GCIC, NCIC, be able to get the guys training on when they get ready to run tags. You have to have a training to be able to run the tag. So she was able to get that. We also implemented a policy for control and crime. So last year, we had a bunch of protesters, marchers, so we implemented a policy to deal with that on a time and amount, on a scale. So we have that.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have Wepker for war. Wepker. I'm going to go with Wepker for war.
I'll be there. That's our light.
All right, I got this set up on it.
Who's that on that?
I was just not able to see. So I've been in my dissection, so maybe they can see where we're finishing. Um, I can see, um, just as a reminder, you know, about this time last year, it was Johnny Haddad, who retired and Mike is taking over and has worked in the field since that time and he's done a really good job. And so I appreciate y'all that you have done and it's all long enough to just come out and say you can see for everything. But if you're good again.
Well, as everyone said, COVID hit us and we ended up on a schedule of two on and two off for the crew, me here half days. So for roughly two to three months, we really handgapped what we could do. We did pretty good on that. Our confidence worked. But like twenty nineteen and everything, we had been spoke about, had been on that one. We had new vet search projects, several were searched and solved for Zach's being low seven, ring concrete, oil chipping, power flister, Austin brewer. All of these are all total underground services except for the sections by season. I kind of took it upon myself to do some whole relocating and liability projects. Since we've been here, we had holes that were in tree lines and I'm sure there were driveways at one point in time, especially around sidecar. We relocated, reworked that old line, made it more accessible. And hopefully less issues. We had several night calls on that. Also some mine builds are relocated on, on that code. Railroad coming inside of the road, one of us, we had to raid one of our main three lines about ten feet across the railroad tracks on Indian Springs Drive. So the rail will do that, that one, and run up stack container cars through there from, I guess, on the extension of the ground port. And I'm sure y'all remember these. Yes, everyone's finished public polls, a main line down across I-75. The two pictures on the ride award, we started working in the daylight pictures, but then got done working on that one. Rideaway, we're beginning out with trim rideaway. We had contractors take down several large trees that were plugged very close to our oil business lines. We had a lot of locals who pushed that in the program after pictures. I'm sure y'all probably seen it around Washington. And rideaway area, Poseidon Precipitation, that'd be the East Main, so we're going to call it River North Frontage, video apartments, and Howard 4100 between my deals. We were able to pre-purged some of the older fleet management maintenance pickups and needed outdated tools for the guys to use as a home call truck. And that has actually reduced the home calls. A lot of calls now they can, they can go straight to the job, fix it with whatever the guy can pick up and never have to make sure to shop. System maintenance, we changed that numerous poles, various locations throughout the fire rate, completed one hundred and twenty-six search orders for street security wise. Another six that we were secretly fixed. And numerous search orders for power service issues, which was a power issue. We were able to purchase a new radio frequency locator to protect our underground infrastructure. And it's actually coming in handy, definitely upgrading the order department a few times. And we made several always purchases of rating the placement, our old one out, safety equipment, new battery, power printers and cutters, high levels of overloads, let protect for those that grow loads, audio over blankets, over line hoses, leaky beams, work signs, some of those, practical. And then we're going to go. As of now, the new projects are going on the books. Town Bridge Center, Patriot Eagle Bridge Gas, Dick Beach Power Wash, UCD Hall, Charlotte House Office, Starbucks, Community School Project, oh, fair, that's the one we have for that. Smith's Gardens and we're expecting several more because we have a first F B thing by every Thursday for the new project. Also finished installation for an underground power system for the banner on Peter Face too, which will end up including eighty-nine new access. A couple of lighting projects to fill this year. Do you have any lighting for billboards, apartments that are requested and entered in that? And remember, Roger fit, the pedestrian lines around the square and down East Johnson. The pictures on the bottom are railroad avenue, just a reference of the new size, of the new little school up there. We did that about eighteen months ago.
Excuse me, you say you're going down East Johnson? Are you going out all the way down that path over there?
No, just the new pedestrian. The street safety, just the street safety. Yeah.
Change, I can do the right white light.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah. And prior to.
Lot of other projects to bring in. We have a two-phase reconduktor project for Country Club Drive. We're replacing old copper lines with new conductors and replacing old holes as needed for about half a mile down Country Club in Gillette. And then installing a thousand foot underground, so the country club, putting our lane and moving that old copper line, placing eleven hundred feet of a line and doing it underground in metal drive. And that tape line and industrial part, we have by it, which will be replacing and relocating our primary cable in the junction.
No, it's right, the country club, they have a lot of islands.
And that's some of that, this is the area we have the majority of the land is in, that those old copper lines, so that's a whole thing beyond that project. Our rideaway goals, continuing to invest in the work of bringing our rideaway under control. We have an increased maintenance budget thanks to C-Captain this year. When you said bring in, get more large trees removed, area trimming and the underrush and undercut. And I have another narrative that our rideaway is really saying, when we can have them in good shape, they say there's money in line, so overtime paid revenue off from hightages and repairing damages and think that all actually will play for itself in the long run. And Nancy C-Captain, we're the first new bucket truck. This is an eighty-four AM bucket truck. It's a new design, an outtake that actually gives us the height and transform of this lifting capacity of a full-size bucket, but it's on a five fifty-five, a small pickup truck, chassis, which is something we need around here. On our liability, we're going to continue to make our property as well as possible, changing out holding failed holes, changing out Asian transformers, lighting restors, equipment. Several places trying to break out lines to clear that ass. I guess these ones were done a long time ago, but now the rideaway's no longer exists. I'm going to recommend a new liability report, our hightages, so they can go identify and hot spots and give us stay on our time response and stuff like that, so we can work on that. This next one came over. We actually had damage, had a damaged hole, which is recolored, feeding the way to the treatment plant. And gotta create, we'll come up with a new way to protect the treatment plant and water plants, we're going to install free things, we're going to be very, we're going to kind of standardize the issues from happening in the future, missing out on equipment and just treatment plants. And we're always trying to be proactive to standardize anything that's going wrong. Of course, they could always go, continue upgrading our equipment, including, I want to increase the schedule of protecting this testing. Actually, our testing is pretty good as soon as kids start changing our schedule and training, working with ECG to get around as much training as possible. Our ultimate goal, our goal, safely make a safe car here as well as possible. Send all our employees home to their families in the same condition they employed working.
Mike, y'all pulled this thing.
What's that?
Y'all pulled this thing?
Yes, sir. Pull this down, you're right. We always be more than that.
I like sort of make it good. Ready, go.
All right. Next, one.
All right, guys, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your support. Also, I'd like to thank you for letting me do what I love to do every day, or see it in the community that I love doing it for, see it for cycling in my hands and for that community. And it's, I have not worked anymore, but it's a lot for us. All right, H2O Innovation Trusted Utility Partners, twenty-twenty. The overview, we'll be looking at the twenty-twenty highlights, we planned COVID, health and safety everything, and accomplishments. And the twenty-twenty-one aspirations of development, renovation, system upgrades, health and safety program. For those of you who don't know or aren't aware, utilities is partners, is now known as H2O Innovation Trusted Utility Partners. This came to effect in January first of this year. It was a change in name moment. Same shafting, same owners, same people, same area, same policies, same procedures, same everything. It was a change in name. I just want to raise H2O. H2O is a twenty-year history in engineering, building, and maintaining water, waste, water treatment systems. Their objective and success has resulted in leadership and commitment to team work. A good moment for H2O Innovation came in two thousand and sixteen, when we were named Water Technology Company of the Year at the Global Water Awards. This year, we remain Water Company of the Year. And I know that was influenced by tremendous growth in operations in the smart. And I'm going to go ahead and read all that for you guys, you can read it yourselves, but those are, this company, I'm very proud of the work of H2O Innovation, they're highly motivated, highly intelligent. The owners of this company are just super, super good guys, engineers, motivated, and they have our best interests as well as your best interest at heart, all the time. The twenty-twenty Water Company of the Year award was one that kind of stuck out to me because they actually believed the company that engineered the water system for the International Space Station. So I thought that was a pretty good accomplishment to beat out something that precedes them. You're developing a water system for the International Space Station, you know what you're doing, believe me, because that's pretty cool. All right, this is their impact in North America. They're everywhere. We have OM projects that you'll see in the book. The road is stands for reverse osmosis. These are sites in city municipalities, industries that have reverse osmosis systems that were designed and developed and they operate in centers as well from H2O Innovation, as well as the ultrafiltration of City U L. These guys are just, they're a global company, but they really know what they're doing and they are everywhere, as you can take about this slide. Twenty-twenty, the year of COVID, you can't talk about twenty-twenty without talking about COVID. H2O's response to COVID was sad to none. They understood immediately the impact that COVID could have on this department, on the water and waste work department. You're not going to find operators that qualify to run these systems, to run these plants, who just not going to fool these people off the street, having to come in here and run these, this department. They understood that. They understood the, the impact of losing a type of part of all you guys. Their response was quick and in days, they formed a COVID committee and they formed their pulling in task force, which I was part of. Community task force, they met several times during the week, they kept up with C to C guidelines, they took that guidance, and they, they, they helped out. They were above and beyond in their reaction and their response to COVID. Not a team, as we saw, we had zero thousand cases and only a handful, including myself, quarantines, which impacted our, very, very impacted our department. We were able to overcome what little impact did come from COVID within the department. They did, they asked the job, very proud of their response and they were sad to none of the response to COVID. Health and safety, H2O provided an out, I have no safety violation up to twenty-twenty. I do the incentive program, it was began by H2O for the employees. We have a monthly incentive, we have a quarterly incentive, and we have an annual incentive. Basically, if you stay safe, you don't get hurt, then you're rewarded. And that, obviously, that's all that's been made up in the open, always look good, be pretty safe and make it out of the fumes. We have an upgraded health and safety program coming up this year with enhanced staff training. And we have an upgraded health and safety program coming up this year, enhanced staff training, and more rigorous standards. All right, we're by the numbers, out of line crew, worked a lot this year. They, uh, they located one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight requests, made one-on-one this year, they had five hundred thirty-six workforce, not many, but they include one hundred eighty-seven little leads, paid three taps, hundred five meetings, four plus. Forty-five applications for service were completed due to the increased development around the city, everybody wants to come to the South, out of line. Eighteen sewer leaks unfollowed and repaired, nine cars falling, buses and seven customers from plants we saw. They did include all the workforce, but those are some of the more common workforce that we have. Waste water, by the numbers, waste water plants combined, the south plant and north plant, treated, uh, just below three hundred twenty-six million gallons. That resulted in a hundred and twenty dry metric tons of sludge, six to the length of. Um, we're going roughly, give or take, five thousand per minute process test per year. Um, had only five violations, which is, is a some of the violations before, copper violations at the north lease, waste water treatment plant one, flow of seeds at the south plant. And there are, uh, some engineering remedies, uh, in place to take care of that. Those are, are known issues, they're not, they're not known, um, but there are engineering studies, have been performed. Uh, USDA loan has been put out there, uh, for the plant upgrades, um, the items within that loan application are going to resolve those issues and enforce that. What are you doing about the numbers? I think we sent four hundred and almost four hundred and eighty-eight million gallons of water to public last year. Uh, water plant, uh, compliance process test on thirty thousand tests a year. Uh, hundred twenty-five back teams and four residual is taken out to the system. We had zero violations through all of those tests, very proud of that, our whole staff, all of our staff. Um, waste water upgrades, we, we added safety rhythm for obvious reasons at all of our facilities, uh, just to fall hazards, to protect our employees. And also in the event that, uh, we had intruders come into our plants, we went to the liability of, of intruders, to, 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 to invite. So, uh, we're, we're proud to have those. You'll notice at the top, uh, that walkway is pretty narrow, less than twenty-two inches, um, you'll notice a little steel made, a black shield made by the, your boot. That's drain pipe. Our operators, without those relays, had to go out there, stand about seventeen feet above, concrete floor, and, uh, open and close that drain pipe. It was a little sketchy, seven weeks, like seven, so they were very happy to, uh, to get that section ready. Thank you, guys, for those. Uh, we got two composite samples at the south plant. Um, these are the first that they're gaining in state of Georgia. Uh, for those of you who don't know, composite samples, our composite samples are basically a miniature refrigerator, a PLC, and a pump, all housed in the same enclosure. What they'll do is they'll bring up sample from, uh, from a designated point, and they will pump that sample up and into a containment container. And then the operator will take that container, pour that sample up to run multiple tests, it'd be, um, tests legally. Uh, we, when I first found, we had a need for this, and was going to have to get something, with a little bit of, uh, sticker, shock, because it was ten thousand dollars, is what I was mentioning behind. And I love saving money, it's one of my favorite things to do in the world. So I went and searched, and I found this company out of Pensacola, it's called, uh, Emerald Coast Main Pack. And the owner of that company, a guy with him, he actually owns tons of, of packs, and he sells those packs to his competitors. And so, but, uh, I found when they let us do their, their, a trial, only unit, it was, it definitely worked perfect. And, uh, we were able to purchase each units for seven thousand dollars each, saving three thousand dollars per unit. So we got two to the south plant, and we're going to be hoping to get two more, uh, for the north plant this year, so. We decided to have twelve thousand dollars on each unit, so they all the top line, uh, community south plant, and they all stay the autumn, they all they deliver. Uh, we've added additional safety chains, signage, light wings, lockout tag out stations, fixed ladders throughout all of our plants. Safety is always at the forefront of, of our operations, for obvious reasons. Um, for the waste water upgrades, the north plant, uh, is due to having ultraviolet dissection system upgrade. Uh, this has not been done yet, but the footwork was done in twenty-twenty. Once again, the original manufacturer is Trojan. Trojan to, to, to upgrade this system, Trojan parts is going to be really expensive. So there again, I went and searched it. I found a U B Superstore through my connection to Rachel Innovation, I found a U B Superstore right here in Monter, Georgia. And, uh, they came out, they assessed the system, we had some extra racks laying around, and, uh, they took on those racks back to their facility and modified that racks, had off-the-shelf parts. Just generic off-the-shelf parts, and the result is only a fifty percent savings on rehabilitating that system this year. For a rough savings of about thirty thousand dollars. So that's going to turn out great this year. All right, um, we add the containment area for our, uh, dump truck, our second dump truck, discharge site. We allow local second truck haulers coming in and dumping into our digest, that's just a service provided to them in my seat. Um, the containment area, the concrete containment area around the discharge box and the second chamber, that did not exist, so that was the regular, right. And, uh, so they made a mess like that, when you were discharged from the truck to the box, it was making a mess, when you transferred solids from the box to the dumpster. Obviously, some of it was dropping on the ground, so not only was it environmental hazard, uh, these guys were having to work and replace levels of this box. And you know what, what's happened is there, it was just a nasty dirty situation, so we put the containment system in there, everything that can stay is right down in the containment pad. You've got thick steps now, that where the guys can step up and work that box at, at waste water level. So no more slicing in the face of that, so it's a magic, and now all the waste, all the help is coming out, washed off regularly into the, uh, digestion, nothing, such as the ground. All right, the important location was, we have, uh, last year, um, you'll see the three white lids right there beneath those three white lids on the circular, uh, uh, tank there, are three pumps. And then we had those rehabbed, the box standing up top, the control system, all of that was, um, rehabbed, all of it branded, uh, fruit of a component to your, your waste water facility. You're not moving flow, you're not treating your water, flow is part of your treatment, so consistency of that flow is really important. Now, to me, if it's not flowing up here to our plant, it's back up in the system, no flow of manholes. So it's really important that we have good pump service. Now, I highlighted the pump up top because, uh, once again, I love saving money, I love that the people know that I'm saving money. But, um, that pump, being a spare, is, is just awesome to have a spare for obvious reasons, but that pump all in should cost only ten, twelve thousand dollars. We found that local, uh, friend, sitting in the shed wrapped up for sure, five hundred bucks. The guys are concerned with the sponsors going to get it, so he was back, they did not come and get it, so, uh, they allowed us to have it for a party-based license. So, uh, and we form a new relationship with Gulfport Queens in, in, uh, Griffith, Georgia. Um, our lift stations are currently provided with pumps from Flight. Uh, Flight is a awesome, they already can go to pump in wastewater for lift stations. Unfortunately, they, they have a flash that attaches to that, we're on the bed net, and you have a waiting period, and you have that time when the pumps are stuck, you have a long waiting period. And sewage is just not something you want to wait to pump, you need to pump it immediately, sewage. So we, we, uh, we're in search of, once again, to find something, uh, uh, or better scenario for our lift stations to go in, and we found Gulfport Queens. And they do it, so we, we took their facility, they had stopped on hand, and, uh, the price of their pumps, and we are actually using one of their pumps now, and it's been performing perfect for eight months, eight, nine months, and, uh, the price of all their pumps and, and motors are, um, about forty percent less than, than our current supply. So no huge savings there, it's going to help save the city in the future. Well, these pump stations, if lift stations go in, it's going to do a couple of savings, uh, who will keep these lift stations up again. All right, we got you glad, good, and at all of our facilities. It's kind of routine maintenance, replacement equipment, time to time, it's crucial to have accurate instrumentation in your plant system to optimize your pump. And, uh, the operators love having new toys to, to play with, it's always a good, it's one of our. And the SO two, here again, we had a, a de-coronation system before this system. Um, it was a liquid feed, liquid, um, soda, gas, soda thing, and, uh, in all wastewater, you have to kill bugs. You know, that's just part of it, you, you de-coronation, you kill the bugs before letting it, uh, into the seeping stream. We have to remove that corne, because the corne is detrimental to the stream line, and everything that lives in it, everything that drinks from it, so you have to remove it, and that's why SO two does it, it neutralizes the corne before you discharge your finished water into the stream. With the SO two system, um, it, it's a little bit more flexible, a little bit more versatile, the best thing about it, once again, I got to do one of the favorite things I love to do, the liquid coronation was super expensive. Um, the SO two is saving annually about sixty-five thousand dollars on the seeping production. So a huge savings saver that, that we'll be seeing from every, every year from here. All right, twenty-two, we go, obviously, safety is always on the forefront, um, development, involvement, we've already been highly involved in development, and we look forward to, to all the big, uh, development that's coming. Plant upgrades, we've got a state of system that's going into water plant that is going to tie in the wastewater plants for the first time. Um, being that development, and talking about development, development has moved up to the front door of our wastewater facilities now, in Mount Opener Phase Two. And then Julia Crosses, they are at side distance of our plants. So having them on scale, we do have intruders, hopefully, we can, we have to do, but if we have intruders, and they do attack, we're going to, um, we'll, they will be tied into the state of system. Um, that state of system will be monitored twenty-four hours a day at the water plant, a little bit of a new, with, with something that we even have in sight, and we'll get somebody better to check it out. The U B sisters will be doing, north plant, composite samples will be going, and we are looking into, you know, the lift station monitoring, so we'll have twenty-four hour monitoring on all our lift stations. That is it, questions? I don't understand for our future expansion, for all of you business. Uh, that is in the works, that is part of the USDA loan that's been put out there to, uh, double the, uh, the capacity of the south most water treatment plants, um, as well as adding another million gallons for the, for the western water treatment. So we're looking, looking forward to that. That was good.
Thank you. Very good, all of them.
Very good.
I, I've asked them, that if they stay, listen to all of the others, that they, all the people they finish, that they do not have to stay for the rest of the year except for the human asset.
Well, they need all of them, though. Well, and. Right, if, right, people, and there are a lot of people, like, to, with all of this, to, to, to. You know, I'm happy, I'm happy for all of us, for, for, for.
Funny, yeah, I have a little, I have a little, you're not legal, you don't.
Every court, every court. All right. Thank you, guys, for the, the student, the work position, greater than five thousand dollars, I think I could contribute one to the city of Dallas for five thousand, for fourteen dollars. Three million, every court, five thousand something, for six thousand five hundred dollars, and once a day, you're spending for ten thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars, uh, so you're overweight to the higher.
Well, this is the last two.
City of Dallas.
Oh, what is that?
I did hear somebody bash, I figured that.
Uh, that is the payout to the city of Dallas for Officer Bale. Um, we may have discussed that previously, yeah, so that's, that's the payout for being mayor less than two.
There you go. Is there motion to approve these expenses in digital or whatever?
There.
A motion to cast the doubt, I'd like to make a few, to approve all these, this, this five thousand dollars. Any discussion, any questions? All right, there you go, I'll call the question, all of them, ladies. All right, uh, Councilor Lawrence, lady, yes, motion, here you go, honestly, it's approved. All right, this is, uh, my role of business, and this is the court, and we're going to hear one of the city mayor's, which is pretty important.
Hopefully, you saw the, uh, my fourth intended package, the one thing that I did want to break your attention, just because you did not see it, um, I did receive four documents from Chicago last week. And within that four documents, there were drawings, and if I began looking at it, there are, there's a concrete beacon at the railroad crossing on Wood Street. I got in touch with them and told them that, um, reminded them of the, the several of the meetings that we had, that that was voted down, and that they said that they would not do that. Uh, unfortunately, all of the people that I met up with, which are Chicago, are not here at that time. Uh, they were able to be in touch with Kevin, who is a guy with Chicago, that, that we've worked with, and he told them that yes, to see, because I did vote that down. They did say that, that they're still just in the design process, and I told them, so long as they design something that is not a concrete beacon or a concrete wall. Uh, but they will, they, they promised to get back with us and, and keep us informed as they move forward on that. That is just resurfacing there at the railroad crossing, which is not part of the, uh, litigation that we had with, with the, the, um, upgrade arms. Uh, the only other thing, wanted to, to let you know that Chief Herman did mention a safer grant. We submitted that to the two additional officers, that is, um, a little over two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for salary benefits for three years. We're working, uh, National C D V are working together, hopefully, we'll be able to showcase our downtown local restaurants, uh, for Ag Week for next week. Uh, the only other thing I have is several public hearings that are coming up. Uh, all of those are slated for April the fifth, there's a sidewalk barriers request for Julia Commons to require sidewalk on one side of the street only. There's a rezoning, there's a conditional use request to multi-family housing complex at the corner of Industrial Park Drive and Harrow Creek Park Parkway. This is rezoning from main base to industrial, to highway business, with conditional use for multi-family buildings for twenty-four months. An internally eliminated sign barriers from public service data at thirty-five South Main Street. The tan handling ordinance, ordinance adoption, uh, this is the ordinance that was requested by the police department. Alcohol license application for beer, wine, and pouring for the new owners of Brits Cafe. Uh, and planning and zoning will leave Monday, and on their agenda is a rezoning request for four ninety-five Holiday商场. This is where the old Ford dealership used to be. They're requesting a rezoning from, uh, residential multi-family to highway business. And also on their agenda is conditional use request for, uh, Sweat, Sweat's company to locate a food processing plant and manufacturing and industrial zone. Probably going to bring that and see if we can just amend, not, not to affect this, but later on, we'll bring and see if, if we can just amend that to allow food processing in the manufacturing industrial. Uh, just a couple of other notes, just for your information. Quick trip is now received, there's only compliance, our construction should be considered, we are working with Central Orange E T N C, we must make the calls over there on that property. Uh, and they can do that once the grading is complete. And Solid Rock Act is, is a cheer, something, and party location, and they'll be opening at eighty-seven Brooklyn Avenue, which is the old Actonson, uh, Brooklyn Bridge. That's all I have, sir.
All right, any questions for this call?
I have a couple, man. The owners of, we take a look on the, what's the status of the railing issue out there, caution tape, and, uh, we've been on that for quite a long time. If it's going to continue, can we do something different, they're just having caution tape up there, more people being outside, more people on the square, if people think they're not open. Hey, what's the status of it be, if it's going to be a long time, can we, can we put some barricades up versus caution tape? That would allow them to, you know, use the space outside, but also still off the area for the hazard, right?
We put the tape up because the owner requested that we put the tape up. Uh, and, and that in general, we can really keep people from going up and down the stairs. I did finally receive the final from, um, hospital last week, and I just had not had time to sit down and talk to them, just as they said two, um, or two, two different recommendations, so I'll look at those and see which, which is going to work best and, um, to, to give them a permanent solution. Hopefully, I can get with them this week, if not, first next week, and then, and then I can give back to, to their explanation.
Okay, the other issue I brought up is the dumpster behind Scoops. You know, several businesses that use that dumpster, just by the sheer volume, now this dumpster is not, uh, to support all the businesses that are up there. Can we consider putting an additional dumpster, or a beer dumpster, or, I'm picking up a regular lead.
Regina, uh, Lynn, and I were with the, uh, regional manager with the Nancy Stogel, and Josh has got to put in.
And the guys just got to it in a month ago and had some of the requests that we made, um, to look at all of the dumpsters. Uh, if, if we need, if we need those to be picked up, uh, once, uh, no, once a day, three times a week, whatever needed to be done. And he actually emailed me over the weekend and said that, uh, he just had a new friend back again and he just said, come at time, get down here. He would be a promise that he would, but that within either this or next week, he would get down here and look at that because that's not the only one. Uh, we got the other one that's there behind the first market now. There's no way that that much is gonna be large enough to, to call it those things. There was a huge issue with that dumpster behind Scoops and I thought that's what she was gonna bring up. Um, but since the, um, the buyout of the advanced disposal, there's been a lot of issues with the, the pickup of the dumpsters. I haven't had as many complaints about household pickup, but we've had a lot of complaints about the dumpster pickup. And so I had, uh, talked to the guy that's in charge there at advanced disposal, um, what the, the waste management now. And, and I told him that, you know, they, they got to get back to schedule. Um, they're apparently, if the dumpster is not completely full, they have it in the dug in. And, and so I've made sure that he understands, they need to dump all of those dumpsters for the benefit of, uh, that it's been done. But that is something we're looking at. Um, hopefully, Steve will get back on that and let us know something this week or next week.
I think if we pick up today, it's worth a good deal.
They had a few that promised that he would have somebody here first thing in the morning. Um, and I had talked to, to Jeremy and told him, hey, you guys play that today, not too bad to it. But for all the businesses to use them behind those. Um, and I told the, and that's, but they would pick that up tomorrow morning as well, but it's gonna be full now, um, with the additional in it.
Um, since it turned up, they have not done an annual development, they're scheduled garbage. Recycling hasn't been picked up and, uh, garbage has been picked up either the next day or the next day.
And I think the activity that finishes, if you know, we talk about down there and more really to supply our activity, maybe one of the issues that we need to address and hold now. That areas because often you're gonna crash and more, crashing and more.
All right, anything else from this hall?
Yes, yes.
All right.
And, um, yeah, today we stick with, um, with this little larger date because I think he's still out there. Uh, we can get him to the day, so, um, thinking, speaking of the day to the day, uh, there's a resident that stayed over on, uh, the main draw with the A court. Uh, hey, it's Lord Jean, but I'm not really sure of her last name. Uh, she was complaining that I had a lot of hot holes in the street. And if you add contact with someone about it, uh, I'll be able to kind of pass it on the information. Uh, if Commissioner Davis had any more information, Commissioner Davis should feel free to fill out a field call in. But I do wanna make sure that we bring that on home today. Uh, was it the day court or the day draw?
It's the day court. Uh, uh, Mr. David has called, he's spoken with someone here on Friday and the message didn't get transferred over until today. And we sent a message to Steve Jones, we think you go over and check that. Um, and I'm not sure if it's the same layer or not, but probably, let's see, this is more. It's probably been four or five months ago now. She asked that Janae Court be added to the L N E because of the condition of it. And, uh, I explained to her that we already had L N E for this year, but that we could add it as consideration for next year. But it's, uh, it's been a while since that's reached, it could resurface.
Yeah, I know that, I know that. Uh, hey, what happened, I, uh, we called, when, when the railroad office was closed, I know we entertain the idea of what should do that little strip of unused road. Uh, is it possible that we can start looking at getting that old asphalt up? Uh, and if you can play grass there, playing something there, uh, the, 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 the fleet car, and we was saying, uh, I'll lay that twice. Uh, but I think we'll make, make the right turn off Indian Springs. And, you know, that it happens a new return around, so I always think like it'd be easier to do the way that breaks that little small people land. And I'm not a break the land, but it breaks the old asphalt and grassy. I love that a lot.
This is Kurt, man, I met him. All right, anything else from this hall? If not, then we move on to the city attorney report.
I think there's others, uh, things we're coming back to see on, uh, taking a fifth, we nailed that as that. I don't have your name here, sir.
All right, city mayor's report. I don't need it. We just keep going from there. All right, official business. Any official business for the council? There's about thirty four other addresses. Or may it have any more readers?
Well, are we going to get out of there? There's nothing from COVID enforcement. Uh, I hope we did, we made our business. Uh, what is that, I'll say for this?
He was going to come tonight, but he is in school and with all the rest of them doing their reports tonight, I excused him until next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other additional business? We're going to move to public comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward to the rest council? If they do so for four minutes on any topic, please state your name and address for the record. If you choose to, to the rest council. For now, with public comments, anyone wishing to the rest council. All right, so, since there's no interest on the phone for this town, we won't confront comments. I'm not aware of any, any for exact discussions, if there was, if you're aware of any. Anybody have any for exact discussions, please read. All right, the answer to this is, if you could go on this night, if you want to the rest council anytime, just feel free.
She don't say it's great man here and I'm looking forward to working with the city since the city is part of our district. Like, this is, I called today, actually. She called me and I, I talked to my local superintendent investigating, finding the city. So I just wanted to report it over to you all, the issue and this and things, you know, small things like that we need to try and do. I wanna try and do and work, you have to work with that shit with the city. That's one of my goals.
We appreciate it.
We're gonna go and work with you as well. All right, there's been no other business. I think one must be the entirety of order of this town.
Salute is a term.
Welcome to the jury by counsel beauty, there's a.
Zach.
Excited by counsel, no, I was trying to get the lead question, I was reading it.